Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, October 11th, Meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to Order. Please rise and join me for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the General Counsel please call the roll?
President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Viall?
Here.
Director Heinz?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
And is Director Winskill excused?
She is.
Thank you.
Item four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about the items on the agenda? All those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 5.1, recognition of staff, students, and community. Or 5.5, item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. 5.1, recognition of Stanley and Downing for ranking in top 10 by Puget Sound Business Journal.
Awesome.
Good evening, President Cobb and members of the board. I'm Nora Doyle from the Public Information Office with a very special honor to announce tonight. The Puget Sound Business Journal has published its second annual list of the 100 best elementary schools in the region of Pierce, King, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties. The methodology gave the most weight to math and English scores on state standardized tests, but also factored in economic and racial diversity, classroom size, and teacher experience. Based on, excuse me, based on the Business Journal's methodology, I'm pleased to announce that Stanley Elementary School retained its number-one status from a year ago, and Downing Elementary School also retained its number-three ranking. Before I introduce the Stanley and Downing teams, it's also notable that last year Tacoma Public Schools had seven schools ranked in the top 100. This year, in addition to Stanley and Downing, we have 12 other ranked schools. I want to list, I want to list those for you so you can see that they're spread out across the community and represent schools from diverse neighborhoods. We've got Northeast Tacoma at number 99, Man at 98, Manitou Park at 84, Jefferson at 75, Browns Point at 74, Skyline at 69, Mary Lion at 55, Stafford at 53, Point Defiance at 35, Edison at 29, Fern Hill at 26, and Lowell at 19. About a round of applause for all. So now we get to hear about what's in the secret sauce at Stanley and Downing. It's my pleasure to introduce, from Stanley Elementary, Principal Julia Hecox, and from Downing, gate teacher Eileen McCaffrey-Lent.
I was asked to speak about what the special sauce is at Stanley, and being this is my second year, I think this shows what it is. It's the, all of our staff are amazing. I have teachers, my dean, paras are here. Some have been at Stanley a very long time, some are brand-new, but everybody that's at Stanley wants to be at Stanley. We are the Stanley family. We have a saying, we say Stanley family.
Stanley strong!
And it really is true. Lots of our staff have their kids or their grandchildren. Family and friends also go to Stanley, so it's a very small, tight-knit community. Everybody kind of knows everybody, and it's just a special place to be. I want these guys, though, they have been at Stanley a lot longer than me, so I want them to kind of speak to what their special sauce, secret sauce, is. Because if you go into their classrooms, it kind of just oozes, but if any of them are willing to say something, I would love it. And maybe tell how long you've been at Stanley and why Stanley, just a little bit, okay?
Hi, my name is Wonika Scott. I was actually a student at Stanley, so I came home. It's the only school I've ever worked for and the only school I've ever applied to be at. So for me, it's just a belief system that everyone in Stanley can succeed, they can have, go to the college of their dreams. I'm a Husky, and that's the only place I wanted to be. And so it's just giving them that value of understanding that, like, you will do whatever you want to do, and like, going to college is not a choice, you have to. So like, let's just start now and have that grit and have that graciousness and success. And so just being able to have that Stanley family and be able to say, like, I was in your shoes, I walked them, like, here's my shoes, your turn too.
I'm Toni Hendricks, Title I Interventional Specialist, par educator, and I think that one of the things that we really value is that we're not there yet, so our kids really believe that. We're just not there yet, and we say that every day. So whether you are a scholar and you have already figured it out, or you're on your way, you're just not there yet.
Lori Root, 28 years on the hilltop, half of them at Carver, but now at the best school, Stanley. My philosophy, my special sauce is, I know we do a lot of stuff about the numbers and what your scores are, but for me, it's never been a score, it's never been a number. It's about the child who has their eyes on me, the kid right in front of me. That's what it's about. And that's what we do at Stanley, we make it about the kids.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Wyatt. I've been at Stanley my whole life. I went to Stanley too. I met my husband at Stanley. My kids go to Stanley. Stanley is our family, and I think the most important thing that we do is building relationships with our students and letting our parents know that we're just the support for them, and we wrap around them, and how important that is. If your student gets in trouble, if I want to be called if my student gets in trouble, you're going to be called too. So we always make sure that they call their parents, and they let them know that we're family, we love them just like them, and we're speaking the same language at school as at home. So that's our sauce. That's our sauce, right?
I'm Vileen McCaffrey-Lent from Downing, and unfortunately, our principal was not able to be here tonight, Olga Manas, so she asked if I would join her, join today, and we have Miriam Omder as well. I've been teaching in Tacoma for 28 years, and I've been at Downing for 28 years, so I may be just a little bit biased, but I believe that Downing is just a little hidden gem in the north end. And we don't get a lot of fanfare, and we kind of fly under the radar sometimes, so this is really exciting for us to get this not just once, but two years in a row, so we're really excited about that. When we kind of figure out what's going on, why are we in this position, certainly we look first to our students, and we have great kids. But what's really interesting, since I've been at Downing, our demographics have really changed. We have much more racial diversity, much greater economic diversity, and we're still doing a really solid job academically. That doesn't happen in a vacuum. We have tremendous family support. They work with their kids, they allow their kids to stay late sometimes, or bring their kids in early so they can get after-school or before-school tutoring. We have a tremendous PTA that works very hard to provide enrichment opportunities for our students, outside learning opportunities as well. We have a support staff that makes the school run, our office professionals, our paraprofessionals. We could not do what we do without their support, day in and day out. We have a principal who is vivacious and lively and just a little bit competitive, and she never asks of us anything that she's not willing to do herself, and that's really strong leadership. And then we have the teaching staff, which I'm really proud to be a part of. People are so committed. If you drive by Downing, folks are there early in the morning, well before the sun rises, they're there long after the sun goes down at night. Drive by on a weekend, you're bound to see some cars in the parking lot. And I know that one of the criteria for this particular award had to do with seniority of staff, and I think, one of the things with Downing, I think we have a really fine balance with that. We have some newer teachers that bring in some good energy, new ideas, and maybe new skill sets, and we also have some seasoned teachers with great experience, great knowledge, great wisdom. And when you put that all together, and you trust the teachers to make the best decision for their students each and every day, when that trust is there, amazing things happen. So I just want to thank you so much for this honor, and go Downing Eagles, yay!
Well, we want to welcome you all up to the dais, just to shake your hands and congratulate you for your success.
Congratulations.
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 You're not family, you're not us.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Well, you better go, my elementary's going, you know, first day I went there I opened, congratulations. I know, that's what I told them.
I didn't see it.
I expect you guys to be.
Before any of you head out, I just want to tell you all, congratulations again. Just from your comments, just a couple of minutes, it's clear that you're committed to the work that you're doing, and it's clear how thoughtful you are about every step of the process, and just the strength of your relationship. So we just thank you all for your relationship with kids and their families, so we just thank you all for the work that you're doing every day, and congratulations again.
Okay, item six, the superintendent's report.
So first, I'd like to ask Toni and, is it Toni and Rita going to give the presentation? Marie?
Marie and Toni and Rita.
Marie, Toni, and Rita that are going to come up. We try to give you a report of the stats from our summer school every year, and we appreciate the people who keep the numbers, so thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, and it is with great pleasure that Marie and I introduce to you some people, someone that you might already know is Dr. Rita Shadhury. She is our Director of Title I and LAP, and how long you been doing this now?
Three months.
Three months. So she comes before you tonight with a review and a summary of our summer learning programs and projects, so I'm going to turn it over to Rita unless you miss.
Rita.
Okay.
Will you please?
I will.
Thank you.
I will do gladly.
So I wanted to say good evening and thank you for this opportunity, but I first want to recognize Kerry Sutton. He's sitting right behind me. He is the Title I and LAP Coordinator, and the person who is responsible for making all the programs for the summer happen, and he's done an amazing job of getting this program together. Our next slide, thank you. This slide is an overview of all the programs that were offered, and we kind of condensed them and put them together, but if you go down to appendix and you look at the first slide after appendix, you'll have details of all the 35 programs that were offered to the students. The four programs that were paid for by basic ed dollars were the AP Summer Bridge Program, the Broadway Center Program, the Truman Summer Camp, and the Asia Pacific Cultural Center Program. My next slide, it's very text-dense, but I want to bring your focus to the two yellow bars. The yellow bar on the top captures student participation, and if you look at the four years, you will see an increase every year. This summer, we served 7,700 students, 26.6% of our students, of our total population. The yellow bar at the bottom shows you the meal counts for every year. Now, we have a discrepancy here. We've got increased participation, but the meal count seems to be receding, and there's a reason for that. We've had stringent efforts to make sure that we count the meals, and we give exactly the number of meals that the students eat. Another reason is, there are students who refuse meals, either they're not hungry or they don't want to eat. The dark gray bars show you the three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and the lighter gray bars, I know it's very text-dense, show you the programs and the jumpstarts or the transitions. The transitions are kindergarten students coming into elementary school, sixth graders going into middle school, and ninth graders going into high school. My next slide is about credit retrieval program. It's called Edenuity. It's an online program for high school credits. The table to the right shows you the number of courses that were recaptured or earned by students at each of our high schools. The information to the right gives you an overview. We've had it for five years, two years remain of that contract, of that contract. You will see 395 students recaptured 470 courses, and then you have the exact number under each content area. My next slide is about reading camp. This is an elementary program. The numbers are there on the slide for you, but our camp runs from 8:30 in the morning to 1:30 in the afternoon. The Boys and Girls Club add enrichment as well as social-emotional learning in the three sites where the summer camp is offered, or this reading camp is offered. The YMCA provide enrichment and social and emotional learning in the seven sites that are our school sites. My next camp, slide, is a very important slide because it illustrates the partnerships that we've forged for the benefit of our kids. Our students and the Boys and Girls Club, and you'll see on the both sides, their commitment in terms of dollars, but our students, when they finished at 1:30 in the afternoon, were able to stay for free and be part of their field trips, games, and other activities till 6 o'clock in the evening. Additionally, our students were able to stay after the five-week completion of our own program till the end of summer. My next slide is a summary, it's an overview of our progress. You will see the numbers there, staff, students that participated in this endeavor. It's a huge endeavor. Our staff included certified teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, security, and nutritional staff. And then you will see that there was tremendous collaboration amongst TPS departments, which led to higher efficiencies. We were able to do things quicker, in a better way, with very few hitches or glitches during this summer program that we had this year. Moving on to our next slide, which are the next steps. We are going to have a continuous focus on evaluating our program. Even though summer is over, we are going back and looking at every aspect of it. We're going to identify partnerships from within TPS, so that we can have data in real time, look at what our students are doing, attendance, achievement. So we're looking into those partnerships to make them even more visible, critical, important. We're also seeking partnerships with our community, and an example could be metro parks, so that we bring even more opportunity for our kids. And finally, we will continue working to create an even better program. At this time, I want to thank you for this opportunity to showcase what we did this summer.
Thank you. There are questions or comments from members of the board?
I do.
Director Viall?
Rita, while people are talking, will you show Slide 10, because I think it's pretty impressive, the number of programs that you've had this summer.
Good.
Thank you. Director Viall? I guess I just said to Director Heinz, shall we give our canned speech that we have been for the last five years? When we first came on this board, the first year that the summer school program, I think both of us almost did what my little grandson calls not happy time, and it was, and we weren't happy. The numbers for the kids were well under 1,000 kids going to summer school. The number of credits retrieved was probably disgusting, and we wanted to see change, and boy, have we seen change. I mean, I'm looking at these numbers, 770, 7,700 kids in summer school is amazing. I was, I was looking at the credit retrieval, and one of the areas I know that we have had for our, our kids has been that science credit, and when I saw 101 getting that science credit, it shows that we really haven't addressed that area, and I know that had to do with the end of course and being able to have a, an option to satisfying that, so, but just across the board, the expansion of that, I know, I feel like the Stanley motto fits, we're not there yet every day, but we're, we're certainly better. The reading camps, when the teachers, I've talked with teachers that have had, the kids that have come back in the fall, and they're ahead of grade level, or they're at grade level, they have not lost that summer slide at all, and I think the more that we can, and I think we've done something quietly, as we always do, that other school districts haven't done, we've extended the school year out. And I think that's amazing, and it shows that when you do that, our kids achieve and achieve at a much higher, higher rate. I think across the board, the partnerships, the work that we're doing, I'm glad, you know, for a while we were just focusing on the older kids and getting them in there. Also appreciated the, the slide about the lunches that are offered, or the food that is offered, and so that people in the community know we are offering food to every child, but we can't force them to eat. And I, unfortunately, and, and I, I had one of those kids that grew up in my house, like that, that had specific tastes and, and so on, but anyway, just keep up the good work and keep focusing on those areas where the kids are credit deficient, and particularly as we come up on the 24 credit, and also on the lower end of that, about, maybe this is the way that we really bust that third grade reading thing, is to get the summer camps going at, and more and more for our kids who are, are behind or at the one and the twos, and I know I wasn't able to be here last board meeting that you talked, and I saw significant progress there too, but I think we can use all the help in the community we can need. I, I'll put a little plug in for Read to Me from Rotary there, looking for volunteers out there to read to the kids. So if you're in this community, and my husband has done this, and it's talked about how rewarding that is to go out and work with a little kiddo and, and get them to get their reading levels up, your board, your home, come sign up, and we'll, we have a place for you, or even if you have your elementary, neighborhood elementary school, they can use you, and they will plug you in. But let's just keep up the good work, and like we say, we're not there yet, but we certainly are, I mean, I think the progress, and I don't know how Director Heinz feels, but the progress has been amazing from, we had our little two-year-old tantrum up here, so we've grown up now, we don't throw tantrums, so, anyway, thank you, all of you, for all the hard work and the staff.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes, thank you. It's been remarkable to see the transformation, and I think the, the conversation that Director Viall and I started, and that the superintendent, the deputy superintendent have implemented, was that summer school shouldn't just be about credit retrieval. So when you look at Slide 10, credit retrieval probably would have been most representative of all of the summer school activities when I first came on the board, and when you look at the comprehensive nature, because the rebrand has occurred, it's summer learning, and it does a variety of things. It introduces kids to things that they might not be able to fit their schedule, they're taking AP classes and they want to learn how to weld, given in the summertime. I look at the, I think my favorite name is the Blix Hogwarts Summer Academy, but the Long Math and Science Aerospace Camp, giving kids an opportunity, that's not about credit retrieval, that's about coming in and getting engaged in a STEM area discipline and getting excited about learning. So I am very pleased with the progress that's been made. I know it's taken a lot of hard work, a lot of innovation, we've come up with some really cool programs, and kids want to go and be a part of them. And then Jump Start, I think that the, the Jump Start is something that, to me, it's the quiet, one of the quiet, there's multiple reasons why the graduation rates have continued to increase. You know, just seven years ago, we're the dropout factory, we're on the front page of the USA Today, and one of the reasons is that kids are better engaged, and I think Jump Start, particularly for those kids that are getting into middle school and into high school. And we, I went through a summer where I had a sixth grader and a ninth grader that both participated, and for them to be able to go in and feel comfortable and to take away the mystique and simple things like learning how to open your locker. I remember for many years after I graduated from high school, still having the dream where I couldn't get that darn thing open. So those are simple things that help kids feel very connected to the school, and I think it's a part of the, the vision that we had a few years ago, and so it's very exciting to see how it's come to fruition and the real-world impact it's having. So thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Director Leon? Any comments?
Excellent work. So it sounds like there's been some excellent progress in the past five years, as two board members I've already mentioned. I'll just say that I've met two of the kids from Gray last week, that, I don't know which academy they went to, it looks like there's a success and a boost, and I didn't ask them the difference or which one it was, but they spoke highly of it. One of their parents told me how much it helped them get ready for middle school, so nice work.
I'll just follow up on the comment about middle school. I think it's really encouraging to see even the growth in the middle school participation. It's always, well, we have a middle school student in our house, so, and we've, this is the third one, middle school's rough, so I appreciate the focus on middle school students, just making that transition more successfully, so I think that's really encouraging. The only question I have, I saw that you referenced using pre- and post-test to measure student growth, and you referenced separately in the next steps, just the focus on continuous improvement. Are you doing any work to gather feedback from either students or staff about their experience in the summer to inform that improvement process? Do we have any things in place in a formal way to gather students' feedback?
I'm going to ask Kerry, because I'm not sure of that answer.
Yeah, several schools are gathering survey data, both from teachers and from students, so we are actually in the process of still collecting that.
Okay, that's great.
But yeah, it's being captured.
Thank you.
I just want Kerry, he's up here, Kerry's an unsung hero in the system. Yes, he is, we know that. And one of the things that's really important is, is Kerry has mastered the way to grab the local expertise, the local educators' expertise inside the buildings, and then help us build a systemic support of that. And so when you see that list, I see that list on Slide 10, it's not one department that's saying, thou shall do this. Kerry is very service-oriented and helps folks say, so what are your, what are the programs that you want to develop, and then how do we help you operationalize those, how do we provide some support for you, and then how do we look at implementing some continuous improvement practices? So I just didn't want Kerry to slip away without publicly acknowledging his great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last comments? Thank you for the presentation.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So we've had, I know we've had board members ask some continuing questions about our progress that we're making with transportation, so I asked Mike Fletcher to come up and talk about where we are. Mike, will you come up and kind of give an update on what you're working with, and what are some strategies you're putting in place?
Okay, I'm gonna jump on Stanley's model. We're not there yet. But we're getting there. It's been a tough process. We switched contractors, and we got the contractor laid, and they thought they could get most of the drivers who came from the other contractor, and it didn't happen, so we are running short. I'm feeling a lot of things, I had a meeting with First Student today, they're training this weekend, I know we don't like to pay overtime, but they're training this weekend, we're training this weekend, we're gonna get the drivers. Like I said before, anytime someone needs something, they can call me. I gave my number out before, I'll give it out again, but anything that I can do as a transportation. And Josh, I'm gonna tell you this too, sometimes it's better being second in charge. I had Sue last year, and I didn't understand all the things that went into it. Yes, it's, it's been different, but I'm a product of Tacoma School District. Trust me, I won't give up, and we're gonna make this work. I talked to Dr. Leon the other night, and he, I told him, we're gonna make this work, because I'm dedicated to it. I got support from my boss, Rosalyn Medina, and she's great, she comes by and talks to me, Mike, what can I do for you? And I think about, just pray for me. But like I said, we're gonna make it work, and I've been handling a lot of things, I grant, I went out and rode a bus again for grant, I got some grandparents who gave me some compliments, and I'm flying high, I tell you, I'll be good for another two weeks with the compliments from the grandparents, and I appreciate it. So like I said, anything we can do at transportation, we're there for the kids, and I want every kid to ride the bus, every kid. And so whatever it takes for us to make that happen, we're gonna make it happen. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Any questions?
I just missed a comment. Michael, I know how hard that is, I remember when I was, I was working in with transition from First Student, and I just appreciate, I mean, you've always been on the ground and working on that, and I know she rode a bus into Grant thing the other day, and just appreciate, you know, the hard work that you're doing to get that fixed, and it will get fixed, we know it will, it's just unfortunately a matter of time, but I will tell you a little anecdote, my grandson started preschool over at Whittier, and his biggest disappointment- and his biggest disappointment is he doesn't get to ride on the yellow school bus yet. So he will be one of those kids that will run a ride on your bus in a couple of years. So thank you. Again, thanks for the hard work.
Thank you.
And just, I'll just say that I think we have all heard from family members who's, or community members who have observed students still waiting. So, and it's just heartbreaking to hear, so, but it's encouraging having you come up and your spirit and your attitude about this. It's clear that you're committed to figuring this out and getting it done. So we just thank you for the continued work and focus on this.
Thank you guys for understanding.
Director Heinz?
Yeah, I had a question. I appreciate hearing that we're working on the, the system side of things. What's the communication plan? Because it seems like we've not been very effective at communicating to parents and students and community members.
Okay, so the robo-call wasn't connecting with First Student. They weren't able to send it out. So what they were having to do is call us and send it out when they should have been sending it out. It's fixed. Technology got on it now and they can send out the robo-calls, let the parents know. We had another glitch where we had a driver tell the parents that the pickup time is gonna be different. But what the driver should have did was let our router know that the time is gonna be different. Then she would have reflected on the website and then the parents would have been up to speed. So that was the bus from Wayne, Grant that I rode. I explained to the driver, it's okay if you get the route down to be efficient and you're dropping the kids off sooner because we don't want them on the bus a long time. But let Office know so they can change it so it can be shown on the website as the correct time to be dropped off. Because there were some kids dropped off early and the parents wasn't there. So that was a glitch. We fixed that and I think we'll be okay. Dr. Heinz?
Is there a written communication plan that we're adhering to?
I don't know if there's a written communication plan. We have protocols with how we're supposed to be communicating. And we have expectations that when a bus is gonna be late or when a bus is running off schedule or there's an accident or something, that we have a specific messaging that goes out with each of those activities. And so this was a situation where that wasn't, you know, functional. And we've worked to correct at least that situation. So hopefully there won't be any more of those issues. And we have protocols that we're intending to follow with each type of scenario. This isn't the first time we've operated with students on buses, right? We've been doing this for a long time, but it is something that we're trying to work through with how we get our new vendor to follow our protocols. So a little bit of learning and a little bit of learning on our end as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all, for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First completed citizens request a speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Please print the topic on your, and your name clearly on the card. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited. And you will get a one-minute warning when, well, the alarm will go off and you have one minute left.
First speaker is Jacob, and I met Jacob in the hall and Jacob, I'm still gonna mess up your last name. It's, would you say it for me?
Fuqua.
Fuqua. Thank you, Jason. He's first. And after Jason is Kit Evans.
Hello. I'm Jacob Fuqua, senior from Lincoln High School. And I think it's appropriate to start off telling you how grateful I am for your support in the Next Move internship. It's had an impact on me much greater than you can probably guess, and I want to explain that real quick. For the last year and a half, I've head coached three different youth sports teams at Blix, Lister and Whitman Elementary School. And I'm currently coaching soccer at Fawcett. Note, three out of four of those sports that I coached, I have never played a day in my life. In that time, I had the honor of taking elementary school students and teaching them how to be not only better athletes, but better people. My experience has taught me more than just that I have to use my foot to kick a soccer ball. It's taught me to be a better leader. I've learned how to communicate more effectively with people and I've also learned how to be more inclusive in the way I act and the way I talk. My experience has also helped me feel my desire to help children with the creation of the desire to work at a children's hospital. I never thought that teaching a student how to shoot a basketball would have such an impact on them and more interestingly, an impact on me. And I'd just like to say thank you to Metro Parks and Brady Becker in the back and you for again, supporting the Next Move internship room for letting me be here tonight. Thank you.
Kit Evans. Kit Evans followed by Christian Jordan.
I am really excited to be here tonight. What a special night to hear all of these amazing, amazing things. I was asking, do you mean we have 12 schools in the top 100? Do we do better than every, any other district in the state? I bet we do. It's just incredible. I was also a Tacoma student here. And the summer school, I have to, I have to say, I was at Hilltop Artists for a decade and so I know many of you through that. Summer school is an amazing thing and the work that the school district and Greater Tacoma Community Foundation and other partners that you have have put into making something that's long enough to stop summer slide is incredible. The reason I'm here tonight is to say thank you. So it's kind of, you know, I kind of jumped the gun on that. And that's because several of us were sitting around talking and it's not gone unnoticed that you've had a really, really rough couple of months, that you've worked really hard. And we wanted to say thank you and I, and I got to be the one to come do that. And this was a group of people in the cultural access community. And we're working on the Tacoma Creates Initiative. And that partnership with the school district is gonna be a key to that initiative flying. And I don't know if that initiative is going to go forward or not. None of us do. But whether it goes forward or not, there's a sense that we have, the work that you've done with all of the partners in the community, the Graduate Tacoma, GTCF, Hilltop Artists, there's just, you must have at least 150 partners that you have taken the time to bring into the work that you're doing and allowing us to add on to the platform you've created for students, has created a great deal of success and infrastructure in the nonprofit community that wouldn't exist without you. So we just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you for including us, all of us partners in the work that you're doing for our youth. And yeah, and hooray for the success.
Christian Jordan, followed by Willie Stewart.
Well, first I'm glad I didn't have to follow Willie Stewart. Even though I don't know him personally, I know his history, so. I'm going to ditto just a little bit of what Kit just said. I am here tonight to just show some appreciation for the board. I know things have been tough for a while, but I also know, this is my fourth year working in Tacoma Public Schools. And I have seen the impact that the decisions made by the board from the 50,000 feet level down to the school have really helped me and helped my school and my staff and my parents impact our students positively. So I wanted to share a few key ways that that has happened. And I just wanted to focus on our strategic plan. So four things. So with our academics, one quick piece I can give you about Fawcett right now, as of this moment, as of our students finishing iReady, I'm just gonna focus on one of my grades. My third grade students, half of them, as of our fall benchmark in reading, are on level. In the first two years of iReady, our highest mark was about 22%. And obviously that is a huge indicator of how we're doing as a school and that comes from leadership and guidance from our district and ultimately from the board. So thank you for that. So academics have improved and are continuing to improve. As far as safety, social emotional learning is something that we've been able to focus on at Fawcett. And that has reduced our out-of-school discipline and obviously increased the amount of time in class for our students. And that's the most important thing for me every day is to get kids, keep them in class and not out of class. And so being able to focus on that part has allowed us and our staff and our students to really self-manage and keep students where they need to be. Partnerships, we, this year, we're part of the Wallace Grant. And I am super happy that we're, we're part of that because we are, our students are going to receive more time, we got one minute left, more time at school, after school with community partners such as Metro Parks and Boys and Girls Club and a bunch of different new things that we have coming. So our, our families are happy about that. Our staff is loving it. Our, our parents love it. And most importantly, our students love it. So I just wanted to say thank you and I think my time's up.
Willie Stewart, followed by Jason Bommer.
President Cobb, to the school board members and to the audience. I stand as a representative of the Foundation for Tacoma Students and to talk about the positive partnerships in this community with the Tacoma schools. As a reference to my being eligible to do this, this represents my 58th year as a part of Tacoma schools. Thirty-six years of those as an employee, six years as a member of the school board, 13 years on the Citizen Audit Committee. And my four-year break was between my time of retirement in 96 to the time I came on the board in 1999. I don't think most person recognize the impact that Tacoma School District has had in this community. And the best way to express it, just what happened tonight with the presentations. But there are a couple of more I want to make you aware of. The partnership with the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma. It allows us to have two key clubs and nine terrific kid schools. Where we go each month through a tremendous cooperation from the staff. If I had to highlight one thing that has really demonstrated the greatness of this district, it's gonna take place on October the 20th at 10:30 at a building next to Mill Creek. And it is the partnership of the Tacoma School District, the Metropolitan Park District and the Boys and Girls Club of the South Peaches Sound. There has never been a facility of this type anywhere in our city with that type of relationship with the services that are gonna be provided, providing for the community, providing for Boys and Girls Club and a strong relationship with the school district. This happened because of the people and the belief in the leadership of the school district with that board. And I want to say, thank you, thank you. And I've also lived and voted in this community for the schools for 58 years. Only a Texan can do that.
Jason Bommer, followed by Zach Vernal.
So I'm just here to say thanks. My name is Jason Bommer. I'm adjunct instructor and industry partner at Idea High School. I've been an engineer for 20 years, most of that time was with the Boeing Company, where I learned this thing called simulation, engineering simulation design process, which I know all of you know everything there is to know about. But if you don't, if, imagine taking a high school or a college textbook on physics and taking those equations and turning them into a useful computer program that allows engineers from all disciplines to be able to design products and test them on a laptop computer against the laws of physics. It's just the way engineering is done. My time at Boeing, I used software to develop lightning protection schemes for the 787. Through, so through serendipity or blind luck, I ended up at the top simulation software company in the world. And I was invited to come join Idea as an adjunct instructor and try to impart some of that knowledge of my day-to-day life as an engineer with the students. And when I was asked to join as an industry partner, I'll admit, I really didn't understand what that was. And if I can give you an example, today, I truly understand what that means. My company got so excited when they found out what I was doing. They actually ponied up money for two interns. We have one intern student that's coming from University of Washington, is a mechanical engineering senior. And he shares the office with me. So I moved out of my home office and I have a permanent office at the school. And we are working on developing a curriculum that the teachers can use for projects and various classes that introduce this simulation design process and teaches general engineering principles that give them context when they're in physics class or when they're in math class and they wonder what use is this. So one example that I'll end on is we are competing in a student competition to build a fuel-efficient car. So every spring, this is a global event, it's mostly universities that do this. We're a high school doing this. And the goal is to demonstrate that we can build from ground up and, and win as the most fuel-efficient car. We're taking this car apart and teaching it component by component. And today, me and my intern and the engineering team at the school had just settled on how we're going to put a workflow and a, and a lesson plan together. And in real time, our intern from UW is building a pump and an injection system that's a critical part of the whole system and showing how we can tie Bernoulli's laws to how fuel injection is going to be optimized in the system. And we can 3D print this device and show how valves can control the combination and the efficiency of this system. And it was a complete win. And this is one of probably 12 projects that you're gonna be hearing about over the course of the year that's gonna be embedded in these programs. And it's a complete win. And I needed to thank the board for the leadership that you've given and the vision that you have to be able to do this type of thing because I'm convinced that this is not happening anywhere else on the planet. So thank you.
Zach, followed by Betty and Neil, and I believe it's Julie Glake.
Thank you. I also just wanted to express my thanks to the board for the opportunity to start a program like Idea. Three years ago, we had the opportunity, because of all of you and your leadership and your vision, to start a school that really engaged kids around science, technology and engineering in a project-based environment and not only do that with teachers, but also invite the community in. People like Jason that you heard from his company who, next week, we're actually going down to California to present some of the work that he's done at the University of California, San Diego, and some of their engineers. Students are super excited to work with some of these people and it's been incredible. He mentioned that when his company heard what was happening at the high school level that they had never heard of before, they were so excited that they decided to fund two interns who are actually working now with us, one from the University of Washington Tacoma and one from UW-Seattle. When the student from UW-Seattle, after his first day at Idea, who had graduated from also a STEM-focused high school up in Seattle that's very prestigious, I won't say, say which one. But he, his comment after the first day was, this is what my high school should have been like. He was really excited. So I just wanted to thank all of you for that opportunity and for your vision. Some really great things are happening because of Josh and Carla and each of the board members. So thank you very much.
Betty and Neil and Julie Glake, followed by Barb Mendelsoe.
Good evening. I was so thrilled to see Mr. Stewart. He's been one of my teachers, so I am a product of Tacoma School District. I'm almost 68 years old and because of him being a teacher and a principal, I turned out very well. And my family. I'm so excited. That's why I can stand up here at this podium. But again, thank you for having us here. And I know I addressed some issues the last time you saw me and it's still ongoing. And we pride ourselves on being the best there is para educators among the other hundreds that we have. However, I would like to go home from my job, my second and third job, and not be stressed out. What's happening is that we do need to have another para in a different classroom that's here at Truman Middle School, which is the ortho-blended class. So we're still doing this double duty and it's intensified a little bit more. However, we're out of the classroom and leaving the teacher sometimes by herself with the heavy, I would say 12 students we have, you know, which have some behaviors from autism to, you know, a variety of duties, striking out literally, you know, hurting others. So we're finding that we understand our job as other duties as assigned. But I think what's gonna be happening, we're, we're stretched, you know. We do understand we need to help out upstairs, but they also need a para. We have two paras and a one-to-one in our classroom. So my concern is, is that the one-to-one is like doing our job in the classroom. So again, I want to invite even every, all of you on the panel or one or two, come visit our classroom and at least see what we do or do part of the whole day with us and shadow us so you can see how we, you know... and shadow us so you can see how we, you know, how stretched we are and what the students are doing. We have a fabulous teacher in there, and the curriculum is awesome. So we want to maintain that by being in that classroom so we can, you know, better serve the students there.
I'm Barb Randall Selea, the president for the Para Educators, and I'm sure you didn't expect to see me tonight, because I think we won. But I came here because I had three goals before I leave this district, which I've been a part of for 43 years. Two of my goals have been met. I have one left, and it's already started, thanks to a couple of people here in HR. I'm not going to talk about that tonight. If it doesn't work out, you will see me again, but for tonight, I just wanted to thank each and every one of you. I wanted to thank the bargaining team, Mike Dingus, Dingus, Dingus?
Dingus.
Mike, and his team. I have been bargaining for 40-some years, and this was the first time I really felt that we were heard. I really felt we were listened to, and I know each and every one of you heard what we were saying and what we needed, and we have gotten that. So I'm here to say thank you. We're number 13, the great number 13, on the agenda, and I know for sure that you're going to approve our raise, right? So I couldn't come after the 13, I had to do it now. So I'm just saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, and I know our paras are so appreciative of being listened to, being respected, and just plain getting enough money that maybe they can get out of those cars that they've been living in. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for your comments, and just take a second to say, I just love that everyone has that connection to Mr. Stewart, and my connection is, he was my parents' principal, so thank you, Mr. Stewart, for all those years of service. Moving on to item number eight, public hearing, 8.1, public hearing to take comment on intent to declare school district property as surplus and authorized sale or lease. And I'm reading this section, right? Thank you. Tacoma School District Number 10 will hold a public hearing to take testimony regarding the surplus and potential sale of parcel number 200907-0020. This property consists of .28 acres and a four-story parking structure at 909 through 915 Market Street in downtown Tacoma, commonly known as the Rialto Parking Garage. If you'd like to provide comment, please complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Indicate public hearing on your card. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public hearing period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments. Are there any comments? Is there anyone in the audience who intended to comment on this item? Okay, with that, we will move on. Item number nine, consent agenda.
Move adoption of the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number 10, policy matters. There's a 10.1, first reading revision to policy 4216, advertising of unhealthy products.
The legal department recommends that the board review the proposed revision to policy 4126 and provide feedback before a second reading.
Any initial comments or questions from the board?
Only comment I have, could you read that so the public knows what it is that we're going to comment on?
Certainly.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem. I'll just, I'll actually just summarize.
Just summarize what it actually entails, thank you.
Sure. The law in Washington requires the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board to provide notification to public schools that are located within 500 feet of a proposed license for a premises wishing to sell liquor. And over the course of the time that I've been here, I've been here with the district for about 18 months now, there has been some concerns from the community about why is it that sometimes the school board objects to a liquor license and why is it other times the school board doesn't object? And what we're seeing in Tacoma is such a revitalization and combination of new locations, new restaurants, new building developments, where we're seeing that there are locations that may be closer to schools. And so the intention of this revision is to say that we trust the Washington Liquor Control Board to be the agency best suited to make a decision about whether or not a proprietor meets the regulations and is going to be a responsible purveyor of liquor, and that the school board will generally not object. Instead, we will enforce this policy and Washington law that says that there shouldn't be advertising that is influencing students, and that it does still reserve the right for the school district to object if there is exigent circumstances or community concerns.
Thank you.
Comment?
Dirk.
Yes, I think that this perhaps answers some of the questions. My major concern is not particularly the alcohol. I think that's been pretty well under control in terms of not advertising, and the Liquor Control Board has made that. Is this new area of, kind of gray area of, you know, my old, my day, they were called pot shops, cannabis, whatever they are now, is that we are pretty diligent about following where those are, because I know we're going to get one of them within a 500-foot radius, and I think that's, to me, that's a different ballgame than the alcohol and with the Liquor Control Board, that if they choose to do that, and the Liquor Control Board, liquor and cannabis, I know, too many years of being in state government where it was just Liquor Control Board, but that we make sure that they're not doing some of the big advertising that I see around town for, you know, for the sale of cannabis. And I think we also, I hope that we also will, you know, enforce with our kids at school, just because these facilities are in the neighborhood. It is, the state of Washington still requires you to be 21 years of age for both cannabis and for alcohol, and we would hope that you would remember that in the dark, and that the people who choose to locate in there are pretty diligent about carting their kids, and I think that might be something that we might talk to Liquor Control Board later on about that. If they are going to be within an area, particularly of a high school or a middle school area, that they are going to be pretty diligent about not selling alcohol to kids. So I will vote in favor of this when it comes up. I think it answers the questions that I had, and I thank you for spending this much time. It's a well-crafted piece of policy. Thank you.
And Director Hines?
Yes, thank you. I am happy that we are going to have memorialized a position that I have supported, which is this is not, it's certainly not a decision of the board, it's an administrative decision by the superintendent and her team, and the conflation that the decision somehow is unilaterally left up to the board, I think this clarifies that. We've had conversations around a particular establishment over the number of years, but I think this applies to a variety of current businesses and future businesses, in that it rightfully puts the responsibility to make that determination on the organization that makes those determinations throughout the state. So thank you for putting this together, and I look forward to us taking action on it at the next business meeting.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 11, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, then to About and Finance. Item number 12, curriculum instruction, 12.1, approval of addendum number three for contract TSD 17007 with Curriculum Associates LLC.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve addendum number three for the purchase of the iReady online instructional program from Curriculum Associates LLC in the amount of $346,902.37. Funding source, LAP.
Thank you.
We'll move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this item?
Just a quick question. This is just an extension of a contract that we signed a number of years ago. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe we originally signed it in 2017, and then we amended it to add a school, so schools have.
What I'm saying is, this is nothing new in particular. It's just the addition of another school for the LAP program. Is that correct?
Yes. There is school choice in whether or not, it's not a requirement to use.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just add a comment that I am supportive of the tool, and we're coming out of a couple of week period where all three of my kids did the math in the LA, and anecdotally, I've asked them about it, they appreciated the feedback that they get from the assessment, and they understand, it's not a test, it's not, you're not getting graded on it, it's a learning tool to help teachers understand where you are and to think about supports and other ways to help you be successful as a student. So I am, I would be interested to see data. What I've heard in the past seems to confirm the efficacy of the tool, and I think that it's a good resource for our teachers and students.
Any other questions or comments?
So I spoke to some of the administrative team about this, so appreciate that. It sounds like it's not, as everybody's spoken, it's not a test, it's an assessment tool. And in the past, the board and the administration, the district has provided an assessment of how much testing and assessment there is in time and in effort, and try to keep that balanced. So in the future, it'd be good to keep, just to try to see what are the balances in the amount of hours of testing or assessment, to keep that, whatever the industry standard is, and what teachers and parents believe is helping kids do better academically.
I think we probably all think our own kids are special, so I'm not saying this to say, I think my children are special, but I don't think he's unique in this regard. But just over the summer, my husband was in a conversation with one of our partners at Tacoma Housing Authority about a program that we partner with them on, and in the program, there's different milestones and benchmarks that students can reach, and it contributes towards college savings. So he was in the group setting where the group was debating whether or not students were conscious about their GPA and their test scores and these kinds of things, because the point of the program is for them to set goals around moving forward, so he just called him up randomly, like, and asked him, "Do you know these things?" And he was like, "Yeah, my GPA is this, it needs to be a little bit better, my iReady Math, I need to, I'm here, but there's, I still have room to grow." So I, in the context of how students are experiencing the test, I know it's not going to be the same for everyone, but I think we struck a pretty good balance with this tool in that it gives our, it sounds like, from the feedback we're hearing from you, it sounds like it's giving our educators what they need to assess where kids are pretty quickly without a ton of time, and it's not a kind of intrusive experience for students, too. So I appreciate that, and iReady.
If I could just, one comment that I got back from several teachers after we started doing this, I worked with, said it has been a wonderful tool for them to get, like you were saying, "I need to do a little bit better," I need, and for them to really be able to focus in, as we talk about differentiated instruction, which is just a fancy word for giving each child what they need within the classroom. If somebody's struggling with fractions, they're going to spend time on fractions and so on down that line, and they did not really, the other kinds of tools that we used in the past, there was lag. These give us instant, give the teachers almost instantaneous feedback so that they're not waiting six months out to get it thinking, "Oh, snap, I should have spent time with this child, no wonder they don't understand that." And I think that's been the advantage, both for the kids to see where they are, I think it's exciting what your son said, and Scott's kids came home, and I had one kid at one of the schools I was at last week, and said, "You know, this is really fun." And so it's not, it gives them an idea about how, where they are and what they need to improve, and I think we've moved from the idea about, "If I don't do well..." When I was in school, it was sort of like, "If you didn't do well, maybe you never would do well." Now it's, "Oh, well, I didn't get this, so now I can." And I think that's been the change in attitude, that's one of the changes I see that has contributed to our graduation rate. It's like, you know, you can and you will. So I think this is a good program, and I think we need to continue with it, and the more we know about each one of our kids, well, I was struck by the, some of us here probably don't know Cindy Johnson, but I think all of us do, who was the principal at Stanley, who really turned that school around, and just before she left, we happened to have been friends before that. I said, "What's your model?" I said, "I just look, common sense. I just look at a kid and figure out what they need, and I give it to them." And I think that's what we have become as a school district, we have been known, we're obviously as an innovative district, but we're also being known as a common sense district about how we, how we work with our children and what we do, and I think that this is an example of common sense.
Real quickly, just, I mean, you each said it in your own ways, but I don't want us to mistake this, we recognize that the magic behind the conversation where your sons and your daughters are able to say, "Here's where I'm at," is through a conversation by the classroom teacher and the classrooms. The tool is just a way and a recognition that it is extremely difficult, hard work to know where every child is every day in each of the standards that we are asked to teach. And so it's just an opportunity to enhance that magic that takes place in there. The tool itself is not an answer. So there are many places where the tool sits, not necessarily in our district, but across the nation, or, and I just don't want, and Carla and I had this conversation earlier, that these are, these are not replacements, these are not the answer in itself. It's about how do we find ways to allow more people to have the time to have the conversation about, "Here's where you are, here's how we're going to help you grow, and here's where that magic is."
Well, I appreciate, I think we all appreciate that we found a tool that helps strike the balance, that it works for both the students and it's working for the adults, so thank you. So it's been moved and seconded.
You guys sharing your personal experiences.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting item 12.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13, business matters, 13.1, ratification of the 2018-2020 salary reopener between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the Tacoma Federation of Para Educators Local 461.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors ratify the salary reopener between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the Tacoma Federation of Para Educators Local 461.
Move adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about this item? Director Hines?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. A couple of thoughts, I'll start. I appreciated Barb's comments. Yeah, and when you said, "We won," I feel like we won, we, and when you said, "We were heard," that was specific guidance that this board gave, was to get back to our long-practiced, principled base, and let's meet people where they are, and let's understand what's meaningful to them. And the report back that we received on both sides was that that objective was met, so it is great to hear you confirm that, and we're excited to continue to look for ways to show the paras the respect they deserve and to leverage them in the education process. I appreciate the way throughout the process, people have communicated. One email that I received stuck out with me, where they described the paras as the grout that holds everything together, and I'm a very visual person, so I thought that that was appropriate, and the paras do connect kids to programs in schools in a variety of ways, and I'm excited that we are able to get to this agreement, and I look forward to continuing to work on issues of importance to the paras.
Director Hines?
So I had the pleasure of sitting in on one of the special education classes in Ed Gray last week, and got to meet a couple of the paras, Mr. Edgar, and I forgot to write down the name of the other para that was working in Mr. Phillips's class. So I was observing the very challenging work that is done there at that level. I know paras don't all work in special education, but... don't all work in special education, but those students wouldn't be able to advance and do as well as they do without your help. So thank you very much. And I think that you really are an important part of this kids' education.
Director Viel?
Thank you. I think I'm probably the only one sitting up here with the exception of Josh and Carla, who also taught, who actually worked with paras and appreciated the great help that they gave. I often became the resident substitute for special ed, as Lisa knows at Sheridan and Lister Elementary, particularly at Lister. And then when they moved over to Blix, the transition program, they are with the kids. And the two, the paras that I had the opportunity to work with were just absolutely amazing. And same thing at Sheridan when we worked together on the reading programs when I worked in LAP and when I taught six, eight weeks of kindergarten and upper-level grades. And I am very pleased that we were able to do this. I was hoping that we would be able to do this. And we found out a way. And we gave our HR people and our, the instructions of what we wanted done. And I'm thankful for the help that they gave me during when I was learning to be a substitute teacher. And anyway, I'm just very thankful. And we're going to continue forward. And I want all of the paras out there to know that I personally have the greatest amount of respect for each and every one of you for the jobs that you do. And as long as I live in this community, which will probably be, you know, for the rest of the days I have on this earth, I will always have that respect of how you care about those kids. And I know that each and every one of you love your kids that you work with because I saw it every single day for the ten years that I worked, at least a hundred and fifty-seven days between Sheridan and Lister School and saw lots of you and got to know lots of you in a meaningful way. So I'm going to be very proud to vote for this tonight. Thank you.
I just want to echo the appreciation that all my colleagues have already shared. And just tonight, it's been a good night, I think, in hearing the comments, hearing what's going on in schools and people's experiences. And it just reminds me that it takes every single one of us every day to do the work on behalf of students, every student every day. And you all are a big part of doing that work. So again, we just appreciate you, appreciate the work that you do and are glad that this agreement makes you, gives you the feeling that you were heard and that honors the work that you do, that you feel that this agreement does that. So that's encouraging to hear. I appreciated the comments earlier. And we're just glad to be at this place. So the motion has been offered and seconded. All those in favor of adopt-
Did we have roll call vote? We've been doing that on all of our contracts. Roll call vote, please.
I asked for a roll call vote. So all those in favor of adopting, I'm thirteen point, wait, I'll just stop. Roll call vote. Thank you.
President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Viel?
Aye.
Director Hein?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
The motion is adopted, four to zero and one, one who's not here tonight. So thank you. Item fourteen, business matters. There are no business matters tonight. Item fifteen, report to the board. Item fifteen point one, strategic benchmark report, our annual early learning update.
Just as the team's transitioning, just want to remind folks, so obviously we have the strategic plan and the board goals and the board established with community input priority goals or priority benchmarks that we focus in on. This year, when you get the annual report, it is sometimes in mid-year based on the individual benchmarks and sometimes in the beginning of the year and sometimes the end of the year. So tonight, we'll be focusing in on last year's SBA results for your priority benchmark of third grade.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cobb, Vice President Viel, members of the board. This evening, Assistant Superintendent Pace and I are here to present an annual report on the early learning priority benchmark of the percentage of third graders scoring at each level on the spring two thousand eighteen, thank you, Smarter Balanced Assessment for Language Arts and Mathematics. All right. As a refresher, just wanted to remind members of the audience and those listening at home that the ELA, or the English Language Arts Assessment for SBA, the Smarter Balanced Assessment, measures reading, writing, speaking and listening and research skills. In the fourth year of the administration of the SBA, ELA, Smarter Balance, third grade scores increased from forty-two percent meeting or exceeding standard in two thousand fifteen to fifty percent meeting or exceeding standard in two thousand eighteen. That's a percentage of eight percent gain. Twenty-two of our thirty-five elementary schools showed an increase in ELA between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. We continue, however, to have substantial room for improvement and fell short of the district goal of fifty-nine percent by nine percentage points. Students who are Native American and students who are English language learners slightly decreased in the percentage of students meeting standard. All other student groups showed an increase ranging from one percent to eleven percent gain. We are certainly, however, not satisfied as fifty percent of our third graders did not meet standard. We have included grades three through ten, the Smarter Balanced Assessment data, in the appendix of this report for your review. We did note that we've learned that the Tacoma Public School students, however, made more growth with a higher percentage gains in grades three through five. So that's a combination of grades three through five than the state average.
So in the area of math for third grade, as you look at this, as you look at this data sheet, students meeting math SBA standards are relatively flat over the last four years. From forty-seven percent in two thousand fifteen meeting or exceeding standard to forty-eight percent in two thousand eighteen. Although we have moved slightly closer to our goal, we have not met our two thousand eighteen goal of sixty-three percent. In our subgroup area, most show a decline or a stagnant percentage meeting SBA standards. And there is a slight increase as shown with our Hispanic and white groups.
So our key findings, I did review as I went through each slide. I just wanted to note one additional piece, the third grade ELA of the twenty-two schools that did show an increase, which you can see all of this data on our benchmark site, which is also available to our public. Of those twenty-two schools that did see an increase in ELA, nine of those schools had a double-digit increase. All of the SBA, as I mentioned, data can be found on our benchmark site. We continue our implementation as we look at our next steps of the K five kindergarten through fifth grade literacy framework and our kindergarten through fifth grade intervention framework. Last year, the ELA standards or the competencies on our report cards were updated, and teachers continue to focus on the most rigorous standards in their instruction. The elementary report card competencies data for the strategic plan benchmark is also included in the appendix of this presentation for your review. There is a need for curriculum for explicit phonics instruction for grades kindergarten through second grade. We've heard from teachers that they very much like to have some curriculum to support them in this important instruction with our kindergarten through second grade. So we are conducting at this time a request for proposals to review what is out there and available. And we are looking at a potential adoption of some kindergarten through second grade materials for teachers in phonics to teach students. There has also been intervention materials purchased for ten of our kindergarten through fifth grade buildings with ongoing PD to support the rollout of this implementation. This is primarily being used with our special education students, in our learning resource centers and in small group instruction. The funding was provided by Title I and the professional development has been provided by our special education department. The ten schools that were selected were identified by the state as comprehensive or targeted schools.
In the area of math, covered most of the key findings as we looked at the graphs. I do want to highlight that fourteen of the thirty-five elementary schools did show an increase in math between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. Of the fourteen schools, four schools had double-digit increases. Statewide, third grade math scores were at fifty-seven point five percent, meeting or exceeding standard, which is down a bit from the last year as a comparison to our percentage. Next steps, we are in the process of implementing a P twelve math framework that defines high-quality instruction and provides ongoing PD to all P twelve math teachers. We will also continue to build resources and supports for an online library. We are implementing prioritized K twelve math standards at this time, including Common Standards, Math and K through Algebra Two. And we're also beginning an RFP process for the adoption of a math curriculum. Since the inception of the Common Core standards back a few years ago, there really hasn't been a curriculum developed for, to meet those standards. And so we've been using Engage New York as well as some other things to offset that. But this math curriculum adoption will be helpful in aligning the work across the board in our schools. We also have, Superintendent Verhar will talk about it in more detail, our Continuous Achievement Plan, which focuses specifically on math and ELA for each of our schools and each building around closing the achievement gap in subgroups that are struggling within their schools. We hope that that will also have an impact on their ELA and math scores and achievement.
I wanted to mention, going back to ELA for just a moment, in terms of next steps, I wanted to also mention that sixteen of our schools have received an additional teacher to support K three literacy instruction in the classroom alongside the classroom teacher. We've provided some Friday report updates for you on that. We have another one coming to you tomorrow. These teachers are receiving training around English language arts strategies as well as the literacy framework. I was at Franklin Elementary yesterday and had the opportunity to see one of these teachers in action. And when you walked in the classroom, it was very apparent that the students were already ready, already accustomed to two teachers teaching and working side by side with the students. It was really impressive to see. In terms of what are we doing for both ELA and math, we are continuing to identify trends and analyzing services for students in ELL and special education to determine which practices are successful. So we're looking at that data. We're talking to the schools. We're finding out, so what's working? You've had a large number of students in ELL and sped meeting standard. What are you doing? So we can replicate some of those practices. As Assistant Superintendent Pace said, this year, we've rolled out and implemented a new look at what we used to call the School Improvement Plan, the SIP. In Tacoma Public Schools, we're calling that the CAP, the Continuous Achievement Plan. And we hope to bring you more information about that perhaps in another meeting session. But the rollout and implementation of these plans looks a little bit different. And they are specifically designed to address and to close achievement gaps with our underperforming student groups. One of the major differences of these plans is that our old plans used to be written in the June, in June of the year before, and then rewritten again the following June. And they weren't looked at oftentimes. I shouldn't say weren't looked at. Our teachers and school principals did a great job of going back and reviewing them, but they were written for a year. And what we know about teaching and learning and what we know about the tremendous, incredibly talented teaching force we have in this district is that within a quarter, they're making gains and making changes in instruction. So the Continuous Achievement Plan is written quarterly. Our action steps are written quarterly as opposed to one action step written for the whole year. And if we've met it, great, we've met it. Now, we look at them quarterly. We write those action steps. We determine if they've worked. If they haven't worked, then we go back and say, "So what do we need to adjust or tweak to make sure we're closing that achievement gap?" And then we rewrite them or update them or tweak them for the next quarter. So that's one of the major differences in our process this year from last year. In addition, our DART team, under the direction of Director Zeke Edman, has assigned data coaches to each of the schools with the highest need. And they have updated and revised our student data dashboards, which are quite robust, as I know you've seen. These data dashboards include data at fingertips for iReady, DRA, the iReady standards mastery portion of iReady, the interim assessment blocks, as well as our Smarter Balanced Assessment and report card competencies. So there is a plethora of data available to teachers right at their fingertips, principals, district staff. And it's getting more and more user-friendly as new iterations are made. And that's helping us to be much more on top of and aware of the data as it changes and grows. So that is the end of our presentation this evening. What questions can we answer for you?
Director Viel?
I have several questions. The first one, I know we had this movement to have kids stay home and not take Smarter Balance and that we do get deductions for that. How many of our kids in third grade took the Smarter Balance? Or maybe I should ask you how many didn't, if you know.
Well, if you look back at this slide, and I wish that Director Fingy, Dr. Fingy-Hung were here, she'd answer.
You can do that in Friday report if you need to.
Certainly. Remember the last three years, we showed the gray bar, which showed a one percent were not tested, a one percent for sixteen were not tested, a two percent were not tested. This year, you see no gray. So all of our students were assessed this year in third grade. And you can look at all the other grade levels as well.
Okay, so that was my first question. Another question I have for you is, on your continuous achievement and what you're, and you're going for a K twelve math pathway of learning, I assume that's my interpretation of that. And if I'm wrong, correct me. How does the vertical alignment work that we have been doing within the district, how will that fit into how you develop that K twelve pathway?
That is a wonderful question. I appreciate you asking that. One, a lot of the work that we did last year was all around that vertical alignment. You'll remember, we had a math team of sixty teachers who came together multiple times.
I came, if you're-
You did come, yes. And you said it was like watching grass grow, but then you changed your mind.
No, I thought it was going to be like watching grass grow. Forget that, right? And I stayed the whole day up here. I was so intrigued with it because of my nerdiness up here, so.
But the purpose of that, Vice President Viel and members of the board, was really around vertical alignment. Because we wanted kindergarten teachers through twelfth-grade teachers, actually, we had preschool teachers in the room as well, to have the conversation about what is needed for the next year. And then those teachers to listen to what the teachers before them say is needed. So as we went through that process to identify priority standards, remember, we used a very rigorous protocol for identifying those. The whole process was to look at this vertical alignment so that we were ensuring what was happening the year after, we were making sure that those standards were indeed part of the year before. So when we go to our process for adoption and we put out a K, or excuse me, an RFP for that, we will be very stringent about looking at making sure whatever adoptions that we're able to look at are going to speak to the rigor and complexity of those standards and align much more closely than what we are currently doing. And there are some new curriculum pieces out there. The vendors, the publishers have caught up finally with some. And so we'll take a look at those and see what's there. And as we always do in Tacoma, we'll look at those, we'll determine what we think is best, and then we'll probably make some adjustments and do a little bit of our own realigning pieces to make sure that it is the very best for our students. But the vertical alignment was a very important part of that process.
So that's kind of the baseline for where we're going is the vertical alignment for what we're going to pick.
It will help inform that, for sure.
I thought that, and I assume the same thing as you did with the language arts standards that I came and watched, will that be the same as we go through that, that adoption also as we move into a different thing? I guess the one other question I have is, did we, not we as a district, but did we move away a little bit from phonics instruction for a while in the K two?
I would say that we haven't been as explicit in our phonics instruction in the last few years.
I kind of saw that when I was out in the classrooms, to be honest. I'm glad to see that we're going back to that. I know that, you know, back in the dark ages, and I have to give my old school Downing Elementary, like when I started there in nineteen forty-nine, they taught us to sight read when I was in first grade. There was no phonics, you know? It was the Dick and Jane primer that everybody laughs about. And then when we went to the phonics, I thought lots of kids learned to read that didn't know how to read. And I guess I'm in very, very strong support of going back to that, that K two strong phonics for reading. I think it'll help us. I mean, I'm a novice at it, but I just think it will help us with that whole third- I mean, I'm a novice at it, but I just think it will help us with that whole third grade reading. And I think it will particularly help a number of our ELL students also in terms of understanding the differences in sounds in what I think is one of the hardest languages to learn is English. And I learned two languages when I was in my PhD program, Spanish, I learned a bit of German, and they have good rules, and we don't have good rules.
Right, right.
So, I would strongly support that. That's the last, I guess the other question I have is how does our preschool curriculum in feeding our kids, learning letters, and will they also be a part of that phonics program of learning letter sounds as they begin to feed into the kindergarten? So that when they show up, they do know all twenty-six letter sounds? And I guess I'm asking, will that, will we also be looking at the preschool program? Because that's one of the reasons we started it, was to have the kids academically and so on. So, I guess it will, that be a part of that program as we move forward?
We certainly will look, as we look at an RFP, to see if there's a companion for preschool. You'll remember that we use in our preschools across the board Creative Curriculum. And Creative Curriculum is a strong program for those readiness skills. And according to the WAC Kids Assessment, it shows that our students are leaving preschool with those readiness skills based on that program. But certainly, as we look at a phonics program for K-two, if we see something that will support preschool coming in, we certainly could take a look at that. I think that what you mentioned is the foundation that it lays for students. And our assessment data that we've been using, iReady, has really helped us to leverage or lift up this need for a tool such as this. And then our remarkable teachers have said, this would be so helpful. You know, we are pretty skilled at what we do, but it would be nice to have a curriculum that we could use as kind of the foundation for that. So, we've been listening and we're looking, and we've got a team of teachers coming together to look at those. So, they'll be involved in helping us to make that potential selection and then bring to you through our curriculum adoption process as a possible adoption.
What I appreciate is the hard work that's gone into really figuring out what we need through your vertical alignment processes, through looking at all of the pieces. Because alignment has got to be the key word here, and you know that. And Marie, I'm so thankful that you are here as our Assistant Superintendent Curriculum Instruction, and appreciate the great work. And Tony, you too, on moving this forward. And I'm beginning to, I know that we've made some gains, and I'm beginning to feel much more confident about, you know? If you don't have the right tools, you know, it's, as my son said to my husband the other day, who my father-in-law was a contractor, and there were no nail guns. And my son is a contractor now, and he said, hey, how'd you guys do all that framing? My husband said, the old-fashioned way with a hammer and nail. Well, now we've moved to the nail gun, I feel here now, so, thank you.
Director Heinz?
Thank you. I appreciate the report. A couple of questions. Well, let me start with, I like the CAP. Teaching and learning is fluid, and I think that having more contemporaneous plans in place should help. We don't get into this year over year. What feedback have we received from the teachers as to why we're not making better progress? What do they, what do they?
Overall, or?
Yeah. What do they identify as the reasons that the kids are continuing to struggle on the S-PAC?
I think that, you know, the kind of feedback teachers are giving us is, you know, the struggling with the challenges in the classroom. And I think, you know, with the implementation of the priority standards and the frameworks that they're taking that in, it's difficult for them to work with. And so, there's challenges there. It takes a while to get, you know, aligned, to get it working in the classroom. So, I think that it's new. It's a little, it's new, some new arena, some new areas for them to have to deal with. So, I think it's just the newness of it and having to deal with something that's a little bit different than they've had before. You know, it's not totally different, but, you know, it's the alignment piece that they haven't necessarily had before that they now have. And it's new territory. I think, you know, the collaboration piece is something that's been there for a while, but it's also new for them to be in collaboration with their fellow third-grade teachers or content areas in high school. So, that's what I hear from our teachers is, they're not opposed to the work. They're not against the work. I think it's just the newness of it and the challenges that it presents for them. And, you know, there's a lot of data, you know? Looking at the data, synthesizing the data, and looking at what the data means and how they can use that data to better support students. That's challenging, too, and it's something that's new, and it's a daily work for them that they have to engage in. So, I think it's just, it's a lot of work, you know? And I think they're recognizing that it is a lot of work, and they're up to it, you know? But it's not something that's going to change overnight. And so, I think that they're working at it and making progress in that area.
Are there demographically like-sized districts that are experiencing different results in the state? I hear a lot, and I'm pleased that we've got internal focus, but there's also then opportunity to learn and glean from other districts. Are there examples that we're aware of where we might be able to learn from? Things that they've done, supports they've provided, teachers, trainings, tools?
So, one of the things that we started last year was the Special Ed Department went down south. Vancouver has some good successes inside some of the early learning with special needs students. Third grade, for example, there's an assumption just in the system that every kid comes in at the same level. And so, we have to remember that, and your classroom teachers will remind us as well, is not every kid learns at the same rate at the same time. This is a snapshot. You'll see tremendous success as kids go through. It's a continuum of pieces of this. Kids come with different skills when they start, and then, but we don't have a consistent snapshot in preschool, kindergarten as a state, first grade, second grade. So, third grade really becomes our first year. There's an assumption that the same standards are measured all the way through the system, right? So, work with me just for a second. What happens in mathematics, for example, third grade is not the same as fifth grade. And so, it's not truly a growth. Sometimes you get new concepts in there. And so, what we have to do is continue to start to figure out ways how we can track the kids as they go through the system. We also know developmentally, sometimes it clicks at different levels for our different grade levels and different ages and different key concepts. And so, all that's to say is, yes, we are exploring different districts in targeted areas to look at what the supports, is there different curriculum opportunities? The work with the prioritization standards is to bring together large groups of our teachers to say, what are the best and most important standards? Not best standards, but most important standards to start with. How do we build those patterns the best way we can throughout the year? And we still know, what was the phrase? Mike just left Stanley. Not there yet. Not there yet. And so, we can go and study, and we recognize that our kids will continue to grow, and that's the focus that we have to keep on.
I think it's important to note, and also that Tony said, we have four schools. We have four schools that are beating the record right here. And, you know, we've had them come in. I know, I asked one school to come into my office and talk. So, they have a system that they're doing, that they're utilizing those same standards, and they have students that are making double digits in math growth. And so, the Continuous Achievement Program is rooted in that whole idea of specific assessment and addressing the, you know, the need right away. So, if we continue to really work and to implement the models that we have in our own district, we can make gains.
And I am not, I've never been a fan of standardized tests. I think they're flawed, I think they're biased. They are a data point, they're not the data point. And so, I'm interested in just benchmarking. We do it internally, how are we doing externally against like-sized districts? Especially if, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, if there are things that have been applied in other districts that have led them to be successful. I wonder if we might do some exit polling of our students that take the exams to better understand from their perspective? Because what I hear is a lot of the adult interpretation. And then I look at these tests, particularly computer-based versus pen and pencil and paper, and how much of it is, do you understand the material? And how much of it is manipulating the tools you have to on the computer underline and highlight? And I think that it becomes problematic. I think some of the brain science shows, you use your brain differently if you're on a device versus if you're manually writing something out. So, I would be curious to hear from the student perspective when they are done taking the test, some of their observations of having taken that assessment? Because I remain concerned that where technology is deemed as a great thing and always better and faster and more reliable, that we've seen from the onset where they had problems with delivering the test. And, you know, this first year in particular, where system failures. And I guess ultimately, it's why I'm supportive of a multiple-measures approach. I like the way, because I don't see in this process a way for our teachers to be able to provide their input on the assessment. So, there's a lot of responsibility placed on the teachers for the performance of the students. But that's a snapshot in time, and learning is fluid. And there is no way in the current model, and I hope that we can continue to influence, we were very involved with the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, when it became Every Student Succeeds Act, and getting multiple measures put in there. I think that there's some traction, and I hope that we can continue to not be just myopically focused on test scores. If kids are learning, I would anticipate that we would see some trend up in that. Because our kids are, you know, when you see half aren't at standard, that's concerning to me. But if there's a way to provide context to the data by also folding in what's the teacher's assessment, if they've taken an ingenuity or an iReady, have they at this one point in time, they weren't there? But now, they have gotten there. That doesn't get reported, right? If the moment in time they take the test, they're not, they're a two, and three months later, they're a three, the branding is they're a two, and the district and the teachers and the system somehow have not performed ably. And I don't think that that's accurate. So, I would be interested, as we're thinking about how we tell the story, that it's contextualized, and we look for opportunities to say, this is where they were in this moment, and I like this longitudinal, is there a growth model? Are kids continuing to get better? Now, ultimately, they got to know the material. But I do think that there's an opportunity so that there's not this disparagement of the district and the teachers and the system with the kids. And where that exists, then we need to own it and fix it. But I don't think that we're, I don't think that's representative of where our kids are. And I'm concerned that the data is, you know, there's Mark Twain, it's attributed to Mark Twain, there's lies, damn lies, in statistics. And I think sometimes we get wrapped around the statistics, and it doesn't tell the complete story. So, I'd be interested, as you're thinking about this, that the qualitative and not just, we oftentimes get focused on the quantitative, but the qualitative from the teachers, the qualitative from the students around the exam and what they're learning and just overall achievement.
Director Viall?
Thanks. So, I will echo all the comments from our two directors. I agree with all those. I'd just like to reemphasize the qualitative approach and how much data you get from tests, and if it's the right data. There's lots of data points, right? So, a conglomeration of those along with what does the actual teacher think the kid's level is? If they could give an assessment of that. So, your numbers on English, it sounds like they had gone down. So, I'm wondering about, curious about the Native American population, the fifteen percent drop there in the ELL. Those are the two places you mentioned that were only negatives. And in the third grade math, did I hear, so that was a decrease overall to forty-nine percent from, what was the percent that we were at last year? Just a couple of points up above that.
Just a couple of points, I guess.
Above, a couple of points above that, okay.
Yeah.
So, it is complex data, so thanks for letting us presenting it in an easier way to observe here. The, I've got a couple of specific questions about the, well, thanks also for the next steps because, you know, there are places to improve, and the next step is important for the parents, the public, and the teachers to know. You've got ideas on how to improve the new curriculum in math that you're looking for, new proposals on. You mentioned something, you used a New York curriculum, is that something that's?
Engage New York was one of the first math curriculums that came out after the Common Core standards were written and published, so.
And that's what we've been using, or are using?
We've been using that at middle school.
Okay. But you're looking for something, an improvement upon that, something, okay.
Yeah.
And the quarterly approach, the more frequent measurements of where students are, sounds like an excellent idea. And I wonder, is there help from the administration on how do we help the teachers assess these students quarterly? So, is it more often, assessing them more often? And is part of that your data coaches? You mentioned DART. So, are the data coaches there to go into those high-needs schools? You mentioned that. Is that the approach? Are we going to give those teachers that are going to assess more? Sounds like everyone's going to assess quarterly.
Right, which we've already been doing, right.
The DART coaches go to the schools that need more help?
Right. The DART coaches would be available for a resource. Our principals are very skilled in the use of data, and they're very skilled in looking at data ongoing. Our teachers are becoming more and more and more adept at using data and driving their instruction based on that. So, I think we've made some huge gains over the last few years, and we continue to get better at it. We have the data, we need to use the data, we need to determine how we take a next step with a student. If this approach didn't work, what do we do next? So, the assessment windows have already been built, and we've been using these same assessment windows for several years now, where we are assessing every eight weeks or so. The SBA is once a year. So, while it certainly gives us some information, it's a one-time assessment, and the data comes back after the children have left. So, while we can use it the following year in those classrooms, we need assessment data that we can use now, on-demand data. And that's what iReady has done for us. And those windows are built in throughout the year so that teachers are assessing students. And we also have other tools that schools are using. One is called the interim assessment block, which mimics or is very similar to the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Many of our schools are using that to get some indication of where students are with the standards prior to the SBA, so they can ramp up their instruction to make sure that students are getting what they need prior to that. The iReady assessment also provides something called the Standards Mastery Assessment, which is a very short, quick assessment, but it's targeted to standards. And so, we've built it around the priority standards. So, teachers are able to use those as frequently as they choose and then get immediate information. So, assessment, you know, we like to look at assessment and testing different. Assessment is part of what we do as good instruction. Assessment is part of high-quality teaching. Testing is something you do at the end to determine where kids are at. So, we want to minimize that testing because it does take away time from instruction. But assessment helps us to get better at what we do in meeting kids' needs.
Okay, so it sounds like you've got some resources to help the teachers do that assessment so they're not overworked with that piece. And this point Director Heim brought about, the students that come in and don't maybe understand the technology of how to take a test on a computer is very real. And I wonder, is there's an option for some of the, you want them to learn how to do that in general as they get older? But someone will come in from maybe poorer parts of town that will not have had as much access to a computer. So, is there a way to give those kids a paper option or some other option? Or do you give them the test twice if they just need to get used to it? So, that's, I'm sure you've thought about that already.
There's very specific requirements. We're not allowed to give the students the assessment twice. And I just want to, just take a moment, this board, you've said this numerous times in the past, and our teachers, this is not the sole measure of success of our schools and our students. This is a snapshot in a standardized test. We prepare this as part of one of many priority benchmarks. It is not the sole priority. So, when you go into the pen, you'll see the report card standards and assessments there. You know, I was just doing a quick snapshot when you say, what are those comparable school districts? Spokane, Vancouver, Tacoma, similar-sized school districts. The data is mirrors, and there's limitations. And that's not to say that none of, that we should ignore this. It's a starting place of the conversation, as Assistant Superintendent Verhar said, is we get this data after really school is finished. And that we should, because it's an end-of-the-year assessment. And so, it starts the conversation in the CAP process. But the real assessment and ongoing is, what are those report card standards? Where are the kids measuring those? It's very complex. There's limitations with any one-time test. This is not a reading test. We find when we dig in, some of our biggest skill... We find when we dig in, some of our biggest gaps are in listening and in the research questions. And so none of this is to say it's the sole measure and none of it's to say that we should minimize what it is. It's a continuous improvement in there. The other piece that I've heard tonight, I just want to re-clarify is when we see third grade to third grade to third grade, these are different groups of students. And so last year's students in third grade were different. And you'll see this across the nation. You'll see a big bump one year and sometimes, and then the next year maybe you'll see down. And then, and so what we look at is this trend data. And the reality is, is we're making some growth in trend data in English language arts and we're flat and making, in mathematics, when you look at all the grade levels. You're seeing similar results at the state. We feel optimistic because we're seeing that trend data go up in English language arts and we feel like we can replicate the practices of prioritization standards. Having schools look at continuous improvement, their plans, we don't dictate the plans. We look at what are the plans? How do we coach? What are those, what are the additional resources? How do we give technology in an equitable fashion throughout the year? Not just for the assessments. How are we condensing the assessment window to be maximized at the end of the year as much as possible so that students have the best opportunity to demonstrate that? And I'll stop there.
I just have a couple of comments. And one relates to back on the third grade ELA breakdown by student groups, the decline among Native American students. I recognize that this is very small in size. So I think just for the purposes of clarity or transparency around that figure, it'd be helpful to have, if you can show it, if it's not less than 10.
We actually, we actually had that in the report, or went to put that in the report. It is way less than 10, no more. And so we're not really able to go into any more depth of that. That would be identifiable and it's against purpose. So it, part of what happens with the student group data is the number or the N size for each year changes. And so some years it might be 10 or 20, some years it might be less. So that's partly what, not always, but in part what can cause, excuse me, some of the variations or fluctuations in that data.
The big jumps, yes.
Right.
For our English learners though, I have a different comment. It's not really, yeah, it's a comment. I just, just the, this line item in the context of ELA, I always think, I just want to say, like these are by definition our students who are still progressing towards English language proficiency. That's right, correct, right? So I'm curious in the outcomes for the subgroup of these students who scored at level four, three or four at the ALPA 21 at the end of the year, like how they're progressing year to year. I wouldn't expect necessarily that our students who are not transitioning out of the program for our English learners at this stage, I wouldn't expect them to demonstrate proficiency on the S back. But for our students who are transitioning at this same time window, it'd be interesting to know how they're, what the trend looks like for them on this assessment.
We could definitely prepare a report for you on that. In fact, we had the data and we contemplated putting it in. It's not typically part of our benchmark data, but we do have that data broken out by the number of students who had exited LL and how they did on the SBA. It's actually quite positive data. So our students actually did remarkably well. The students who had transitioned out of LL took the SBA in third grade. I want to say, don't quote me on this, but it was somewhere around 28% of those students or more had passed or met standards. So we do have that data. Dr. Manon Hodge has been analyzing that and combing over it with the assistance of the DART department. So we could perhaps ask if she would be willing to put something together for you. But she's been very intensive, intense about looking at that data and digging into it. And she was the one who said, we know where those students are that are meeting standard, so let's review, let's understand what's happening there so that we can look at some of those practices and replicate those. One interesting comment that I wanted to share, these, yesterday we were out at schools and we were talking to some principals and teachers and one of them shared with us that one of the questions on the SBA last year had a reference to lawn darts. And it's funny because we all kind of sat around the table and I, some of the, you know, I certainly don't want to be disrespectful about age, but some people at the table, oh, lawn darts, yeah, and then others were at the table saying, what is that? Is it, you know? And for some of our students who live in communities where they don't have a lawn or places where they have, you know, rocks and flowers and shrubs in their yard and don't have lawn, sometimes we don't even know what a lawn is. I mean, grass, you know, your yard. So that's just one, just example of how the assessment, remember it's different every year. We don't use the same third grade SBA from year to year to year. They have metrics folks who write these and sometimes there are some really kind of crazy questions that are asked. And I'm sure a student would look at that and say, I can't even approach this question. Even if they could have done the math or done the reading, it just threw them to see something about lawn darts. So just an interesting anecdote for us to keep in mind as we look at this data.
Thanks. My last question and comment, combination is I appreciate all the discussion around multiple measures and I think that's the right path for us to be on. And I like the frame on the continuous achievement plans because I do think that more frequent looking and looking at and updating of those plans is probably the right way to go. But with that, all of that in mind and context at the school level, just reflecting back on some of the discussion we had about the secret sauce in the beginning, like looking at every student, figuring out what they need and giving it to them. I'm curious about how in a systemic way, we use those multiple measures to look at every student and then identify who's most in need of some additional support. Like how building to building, do we have a systemic approach to that? Because I feel like unless it's systemic, there's, these gaps get perpetuated. So I'm curious about how that happens. And I don't have to have an answer right now, but.
So part of our continuous achievement plan is to do exactly that, Director Cobb. Yesterday I was at a school and we were in a private room, not a room that others can come into or public, it's for staff. But if you were to see this wall in this room, they have their cap goals listed on the walls. And then they actually have a sticky note for each student in that gap or in that area who hasn't met standard yet. And they've got that student and they're specifically using their action steps or employing those actions, action steps to meet the needs of that student. And they're going to monitor that the next one and then the next quarter and then the next quarter. So, so these students are right there, the names of them are posted, we know who they are. And our goal is to be very strategic and very intentional about designing instruction supports for those students to meet their needs. Because the goal is that we close some of these gaps that you're seeing. Certainly our goal is to continue to offer the highest quality core instruction. We know that that makes the best, the greatest gains for us, is to have the very highest quality instruction happening every minute of every day. But we also know, as Deputy Garcia said a few minutes ago, that not every student progresses at the same place at the same time. So some need more. Some need a little extra here or a little extra there. So the schools are, it's, I know our level directors are sitting out here tonight and they have done some stellar work with our schools around this and these cap plans that have very specifically looked at. And I don't like to use the word targeted because that's a, that's a wrong word. But they very specifically and intentionally are looking at the students in those areas that haven't met and talking about what do we do to get them there? We know them by name, need and, and passion as well. I mean, knowing who those children are makes a huge difference in, you know, helping them to succeed. So we feel that that is, it's not perfect. We're certainly going to continue refining it. But we feel it's a start to being very specific about who are the students? What do they need? How do we get them there? And how do we stay relentless about it until they are there?
I'm guessing that this is a way of that, of working that some building principals may have been doing for a while. But because you said it so like effortlessly, I just want to clarify, this is an evolution in practice. So like, and so I just want to, I think for the public, anybody listening, like because that answer was so effortless, we might assume that that's how we've been doing it all along. So based on this new way of work, it seems like in some time, we should expect to see the results of it.
And it's hard work. I mean, I had the good fortune to sit with Allison, who's sitting over here, who is with the TNT, and we had an opportunity to visit today about our scores. And I think it's important that the public knows that in a given class of third graders, there could be 24, 26. And along that continuum, there's really probably a very small number there right at third grade. You've got students who are not yet there and you've got students who are beyond that. And it is the job of the classroom teacher and a very tough job to meet the needs of all of those students. Because our job is to provide a day of instruction for every day. Every student comes to the classroom, whether they've met it or they're beyond it. So that's, that's a lot of pressure and a lot of work and a lot of monitoring for teachers. So it's, if anyone thinks it's an easy job, they need to think again.
That's all my questions. Anyone, any last comments? Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Okay. Item 16, board comments or reports. And I'll start with Director Leon.
Thanks. So a couple of weeks ago, I attended the Latino Expo with Superintendent Santoro was there and Debbie Wenskell, a board member. So it was an excellent place to observe some wonderful dancing from, and singing from different groups. Some were high school students from Winachi that came over the big mariachi band. The other important part was being able to connect with a lot of Latino families and parents and students that were there. I have a little brother from Big Brothers, Big Sisters that was at the, I took to the event. So being able to hear from the parents, the improvement that they feel like they've had in their, in their kids' education was key. One of the things I did take from that also was that they were concerned about the amount of translation services for conferences. Some of them didn't feel like there was enough help with the translation piece. So I was only speaking to the Spanish families at that, at that event. But, you know, I don't need an answer right now, but I'd like to look into what the translation services look like for our non-Spanish, or non-English speakers for parent conferences in the district at some point. But they spoke highly of their kids' education in general. And I'll just, I'd like to just give a couple of examples of some of the teachers and what they were doing because at Gray Middle School, so I mentioned earlier, so I went to several schools, but I'll just talk about Gray right now. I don't have the privilege of going into my kids' classes as much now that they're older and seeing what they're learning because I'm not allowed to do that and they're too embarrassed to have me in there trying to observe that. But I got to see, so I'll just mention a little bit, Ms. Debra Spencer, teaching English, talking about descriptive writing, using Robert Frost's book, or Short Story of the Road, Not Taken, talking about connotation and denotation and just seeing the kids engaging with that and seeing a lesson plan around that. That was impressive to see. Ms. Jennifer Zisti, Zizette, I think I pronounced that wrong, science teacher in sixth grade, talking about memory experiments and having the kids work on short and long-term memory and having them do their own experiments on what they remembered and didn't. It was very, it looked like the kids were understanding and not just reading things or being lectured at, but really kind of doing experiments about this at the same time. And then I mentioned earlier, Mr. Phillips' class, a special education class, the work that they had to do in and out of two different rooms to help the kids that were autistic and all the developmental concerns that they had and seeing them work as a team was impressive. And forgetting somebody probably, but it was just impressive to see the teachers work their craft and have the kids really be engaged in these, in these lessons. So nice work to all of them.
Dr. Dine?
Thank you. Last week I was out at FOS and observed a variety of classrooms. An issue that came up was in the AP Biology Room and around materials. So I'm interested to better understand textbook, textbook ratio and microscope and microscope ratio. They're working at FOS to align a ninth through 12th grade vertical and horizontal alignment and making certain that they have the materials that they need when we're talking about a STEM class and looking at slides is an integral part of that biology process. And I love the Friday Report and the rhythm that we've gotten into in terms of materials that are coming to a board member, board meeting. We've gotten into a nice sequencing of getting us materials well in advance of any sort of board deliberation or decision-making. And as we're getting into budget conversations over the next weeks and months and understanding that the MSOC funding isn't, doesn't amount to much, that comes from the state for materials and those sorts of things, I'd like us to take a comprehensive look at the materials that we believe that we're going to need. And not only the public funding, but you know, we heard what's going on at IDEA and where private sector partners understand the value of teaching high school students and so are their private sector partners that might want to be a part of making investments in the technology that students are going to need to better learn. And I think similarly with music programs, we heard Kit Evans talk about Tacoma Creates and I'm a big believer in the cultural arts for all students. And I know that equipment, instruments sometimes is cost prohibitive, even when we do our rental programs at a discounted rate. So as we're thinking about budget and what we value as a district and what we're trying to instill in kids as well-rounded human beings, making certain that we first understand what the need is and then we can think about how are we going to fund that need. The second issue, and we've talked about it up here in past meetings with the park or with Whitman in particular, but other playfields and playgrounds and what are those hours of operation? And finding that there has been guidance that's gone out, I was, I was glad to hear that. But there is a belief that the, that those facilities should be accessible 24/7. And when I look at examples of other public fields, for instance, parks, there's a curfew in parks. So I think that there's an opportunity for us not to solve this problem in isolation, but to work with the city and the parks districts to come up with a common protocol. So we understand during school days, I think people understand why those fields and playgrounds are locked down. Accessible on the weekends, but is that accessible 24/7? Or is there some reasonableness to have a common practice? If you have to be out of a park during a certain period of time, does it make sense that you would have to be off of a school playfield? If we're going to address this issue, I think we're going to, we're bound to be more productive if we do it collaboratively with those partners. I don't know what the forum is to do that, but I do think that there's an opportunity. We have great engagement with Metro Parks and they have, the city certainly has some areas that have curfews, but perhaps a conversation with park staff to understand if we could get some sort of alignment that could help us get resolution to this issue. That's all.
Director Leon?
Okay. I had the opportunity to visit Downing Elementary and main thing I went over there for, I always show up over there and I know what set in many of the teachers' classes that were here is that Downing will be the one school that was on our 14 school list that will not get rebuilt right at this point. And Morris and Chris said that they would make significant improvements there before. That's an old school, I know how old it is. It's six years younger than me. So it's up at 68 years old. So it is, it's one, but it was, we were fortunate that it was well-built. But it needed improvements and when I went over, Olga was still there, she hadn't, she had not be gone as she has right now. And she said, and we walked around and did talk with a number of the teachers, but the main thing was the replacement of the nasty old carpet and that, and it was nasty old carpet and that looks great and good. But the one issue that still needs to be addressed is the, and I swear they were there since I was there, is the curtains in the cafeteria slash auditorium, whatever. And I would really ask that we find out where that is. And I did mention, and I believe to you, Dr. Garcia and Superintendent Santoro, I mean, it, you know, make that school as up-to-date as we can for that because it is now our oldest school in the school district. That won't be replaced for a while. And the school, the teachers and principal, you know, are very understanding of the position that they are in. And they said, you know, thank you very much for the improvements, but if you could do that, that would be great. So if we can, if we can get there. I also stopped by Grant Elementary and talked, which is not one of my schools, but it is my neighborhood school because I only live about eight blocks from there. And their transition in there went very, very well and except for the bus- And their transition in there went very, very well and, except for the bus mess. But Michael's working that out by riding and I got some good comments back from parents saying, thank you that, you know, Michael Fletcher was out there, you know, riding the buses and getting that solved. I would like to second what Director Heinz said about the, the playgrounds. The Park District has always had a, their parks close at sunset. I live close to Titlow Park. They come in, they shut the gates, they make sure everybody's out of there for safety reasons and a number of things. And I think, you know, if we work on some kind of a, I know that it's been an issue for Geiger, having people up on that field after and jumping fences. I haven't talked to Neil recently, but I know that it, if we could adopt that and post that, something like that and look at what parks are doing and just simply say, you're welcome to use our facilities from Sunset and this is for your own safety and the safety of our community. And, and I think, I think people will understand that. And if they're accessed. You know, the other issue has been the vandalism at, at Whitman, which has been almost out of control. And I think what we need to do in that is to have a community meeting at Whitman with Safe Streets, with all the partners, with Tacoma Police Department, and bring the community together. And then maybe we can, and the city council, and just say, what can we do to stop this vandalism? Can we have more police patrol? Can we have more block watch? There were people, you know, when, back in the day when I was mayor with the Hilltop, it was the block watches that helped us get rid of the gang problem up there. When people once figured out that this is my, my stake in this. And if they know who's doing it, anonymous calls to a number at Safe Streets or the Police Department saying, this is what's going on. And get the community, take ownership back of their community again, is what needs to happen, I think, over there in terms of this vandalism. And give everybody a piece of that, of that pie. And I'm not sure who should convene that, that meeting, but I think it should be done pretty soon. And maybe talk with Frisell at Safe Streets, they're good at that. And with Chief Ramsdale and get their CLO officers out there and see if they can't up there, come around the neighborhood and then get the neighborhood to really get back and embrace that, that block watch thing. And I think that will help us because, you know, that, that's getting out of control over there. And that's been the main, the main problem. And that's expensive when we have that damage to our schools. And, and see if that can happen. The other thing, I would ask my colleagues to please fill out your WASTA ledge priorities that I sent you. Panya sent them out. I told her she was a rock star for that because she got them this morning and you got them really quickly. And we just got them yesterday from, from WASTA as they were. So the ledge priorities. At the study session next, next week, Charlie Brown and I will be talking a little bit about what our read is on what's going to be going on and where we're, where we're going to be come January in terms of our priorities. I do have a request of, of Superintendent Santorno and Chief Counsel. Could you please forward in the Friday letter, the board goals that we finally got done and the new policy changes? And I want to thank Renee for the time that she's had to spend on that. And I know she got sidetracked with other issues and, and I think that you will be pleased with what we have come up to. I know it took longer than we thought it was and it got a little more complex. But so that we can just take a look at it and make any suggestions at the study session and then we can adopt them at the following business meeting if that. And I had talked to Carla about putting that on the agenda and, so we can get that out of the way. So I do have to apologize for my phone going off. My husband inadvertently set our alarm off and it goes off. Our intrusion alarm goes off whether your phone is on or off. So I got a quick sorry from him. So I'll, I'll exact something when I get home for that. So thank you.
I'll just share that during our last board meeting, I had the opportunity to, well, I'm sad to not be here, but I had the opportunity to be at the Council of Urban Boards of Education, so representing our district there. I've only been to Cube twice now, but I, at this meeting, I had the opportunity to sit in a small focus group with five other board members from other districts. It was hosted by the Association of School Boards Journal. So it was neat to be in a setting like that, just to hear some of the other challenges and successes that some of our colleagues in other urban districts are experiencing right now. And some of the questions that came up, it was just nice to hear that some of the, well, what we all know, we're grappling with some of the same challenges here that many other districts are across the country. But I also left feeling really fortunate because of some of the policy infrastructure we have around education in Washington State. For better or for worse, we've got a very active education legis, collection of education-oriented legislators. So some of the just floors that are, require changes in practice at the local district level, like around restrictions around using exclusionary discipline approaches. Some of those things that have been put into law at the state level here are things that local districts and these places are having to fight for, district by district. So. And just some of the experiences, just social issues. I think one member was in the Flint area. So just some of the things that we, we have our challenges here. But some of the things that we just take for granted as a part of our education infrastructure are things that our colleagues in many other districts across the country who are serving students of color, English learners, low-income students, they're fighting to provide students with the kind of educational opportunities that we have really been, as a community, kind of fortunate to make happen for our kids. So I left feeling encouraged, also though, by the focus of some of the sessions at the conference. Lots of focus on social emotional learning, lots of focus on family and community engagement, focus on really embedding systemic approaches to mitigate the impacts of implicit bias on students and the experience between people in our system. So all that was encouraging still, but just the focus of these districts on meeting the non-academic needs of kids too, that was great.
Glad I got you involved.
Yeah, that was great. So all in all, good experience and I'm glad that. We've got lots of good individuals sitting in these school board seats in some places. So that was encouraging. I'll just end there. Any other comments from members of the board?
You know, and I, something I forgot to mention, in this month's or this quarter's edition of the Washington State School Directors Association Journal, there was an article talking about, the title was Do District Policies and Procedures Really Shape Daily Practices in Schools? And it was talking about choose a policy and its related administrative procedures for the special focus of an impact review and then conduct the policy impact review in annual cycles. And it seems to me that that maybe, we get quarterly benchmarks, that might be a similar opportunity for us to look at policies that are associated with those benchmarks to make certain that what our role and responsibility as school board members is in fact, supporting the outcomes. I think sometimes we set the policy and we set the outcomes, but we don't necessarily then check back to see is it having the intended impact. So that's a suggestion to throw out for consideration. And perhaps, you know, at the study session, we're going to talk about those policies and procedures for school boards. Something that we might want to adopt is to put that into practice.
Director Leon, did you have another comment?
No.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Student Board Member O. Haller.
No, not.
New report? How was the start of school?
It's good. Yes, senior year. I'm liking it a lot, so.
Okay. Well, we're glad to see you here.
Thanks for.
And thanks for taking the time. I know it's getting late on a school night, so we'll get going.
We probably have homework too.
Item 17, announcement of future board meetings. We will meet Thursday, October 18th at 6:00 PM for a study session. We will also meet Thursday, October 25th at 6:00 PM for a regular business meeting. Item 18, executive session. There is no executive session tonight. And with that, we'll get to item 19, and we are adjourned.